We're going to call to order the Plaza 1006 meeting, the quarterly meeting for May 6th at 6:30. We have a quorum. We will be missing one councilman tonight, who is also on Plaza 10, Alex Scanlon. The board business is discussion of possible action on the following items, consent agenda, item one and item two, the financial report, and the Plaza 10 meeting minutes from 1:28. Do we have any motions for Plaza 10 agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent agenda items one and two.
Got a motion by Rick, got a second by Amanda. Is there any discussion on that business? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. We will adjourn that meeting at 6:31. You work quick, huh? Alright, we're going to move on to the regular city council meeting. Once again, we have a quorum, we'll be missing Alex Scanlon. We will say the pledge of allegiance next. Okay, we're going to start off with item three, a public hearing on the annexation of Jawor Road. We were supposed to do this shortly after they built that road, and for some reason it didn't happen. So, we put Mike and Dick on that, and they got worked through that, took a little while. Dick?
No, we just wind up going through the public hearings. We'll have one at this meeting, and then we'll have another one in June, and then we'll actually formalize it in July. So, and just go ahead and state the time for the public hearing, and then ask if there's any comments for that.
Alright, so we will start the public hearing at 6:33. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this public hearing at this time? Okay, having done, we'll close the public comments for the public hearing, and we will move on to the next item. Next item will be reports from council, Councilman Ed Waters.
Anybody that missed the entertainment with Hamilton Lima Saturday night, he does really a fantastic job, so next time he comes, maybe next year, everybody show up, because we had a good turnout out there.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Rick Fisher?
No report, but I do want to give a shout out to our fire department and EMS service. On Sunday morning, my wife's mother took a tumble up in the house and ended up breaking her hip. Made a call to the EMS, and those guys were there in less than five minutes, and even going up those stairs and, you know, having to navigate all that and get her down on her board, they had her on her way to the hospital in less than ten. They did a phenomenal job, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Rick. Jeff Tarrell, no report. Alright, Alex isn't here, may approach him, Amanda Fenwick.
Just thank you to everybody who got out and voted in this past election. Mayor's probably going to talk about it, but the two of the three props for Galveston County did pass, including the one that includes the bridge into Clear Lake Shore, so thank you for voicing your vote. That's all I have.
Okay, you could have talked about it, it's okay. So, I'll just follow up with that, that was first on my list. At this point, Mike and I will be working with Galveston County on the details of where that project goes, and what we need to do to get that rolling. Oh, so, I want to go ahead and announce, Alex Scanlon has turned in his resignation, he'll be leaving council. They're going to be leaving the island, they're going to be moving to Friendswood, so his last council meeting will be the second meeting in May. So, if you see Alex around, make sure you thank him for all the things he's done for the city over the years. He's been involved in many, many things. Richard, I can get you a tissue if you need one, I'm sure you're crying back there. You know, we can handle that. David, you want to get him a tissue? No, I'm kidding. But, but he's given a lot to, second meeting in...
Second meeting in June.
Oh, I thought he told me May, I'm sorry. So, yeah, second meeting in June. No, I thought it was May. I'll clear that up. But, I want to say he told me May. The boat ramp update, we have completed our application, we have turned in everything we need to turn in, working with Shellmark Engineering. Mike is having our engineer record call your goover, those drawings, so we can go ahead and go out to bid before that even gets approved. We're trying to get ahead of this game and not be behind it, we've been behind it for a very long time. So, we're trying to work that forward. They do have the funding, that has been confirmed. I did talk to Julie Diller, our rep today at Texas Parks and Wildlife, she is well aware that that has been turned in, she's going to go through that in the morning and get back with either Cheryl or Mike, and let us know if there's anything missing, and make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. Once we get those details worked out with Shellmark and Colliers, we're going to proceed into bidding that project contingent upon that application being passed, so we can fast forward everything. I know in the past, there's been some question of, oh, do we want to do that in the summer? You know, there's a lot of traffic. Hey, we're going to do it as soon as they get ready. I'm sorry, the boat ramp may be shut down, I apologize for that, but we've been waiting on this way, way too long. We need them to get started as soon as they're ready, and we don't want to hold them up. And for those of you that are inconvenienced, you have been inconvenienced for seven years, I don't think a few months is going to kill us. We can go somewhere else to launch our boat, I'm sure we can find somewhere. That's a very important project. We attended, we, when I say we, some of the council attended the Blessing of the Fleet and the Gumbo Cook-Off over at the Elks Lodge. We did have a team from Clear Lake Shores that consisted of Grant Deets and some of the people that he cooks with up at the Okies Gumbo Cook-Off, and they won second place, believe it or not, so shout out to them. We had a lot of fun over there, we are their main sponsor for that event, so they had our banner everywhere, they gave us some t-shirts, we got to try the gumbo. It was really a good event over there, and they were very happy that we were there. Oh, and then Sunday, we did go judge the boats on Sunday at the waterfront, so that was fun also. Just real quick, I want to say it has been an honor and a pleasure to be your mayor, okay? I get a little choked up, because there's a lot of people I want to thank. It's been a privilege to serve the city of Clear Lake Shores, and I'm looking forward to another term. I want to thank our staff for their support and their willingness to be a part of the everyday team, we couldn't do what we do without our staff. I want to thank our chief, David Donaldson, for his leadership to our officers, who give everything they have to this city every single day, and they do an outstanding job. When you see them, thank them. I also want to thank our city council. Man, they do an outstanding job of preparing for these meetings and really asking questions and going, hey, what is this, and what is this about, where can we find this? They really, really do care about this city, and they do an outstanding job, so I want to thank them. I want to thank Mike. For a guy who came along, he's been a really good leader to the staff in this city. There were some questions in the beginning, you know, I'm not a project manager, I think Mike's done an outstanding job at managing projects. You know, without our staff and Mike and the way the city council works together, we wouldn't be getting all these projects done, we'd still be talking about them five years from now, like we did the parking lot and some of the other things that we've done. So, I want to give a big shout out to Mike. He comes to work with a sense of pride, he does not live here, but he acts like he lives here, he acts like he cares about this city, just like it's his own, as well does everyone else, including David and some of the staff members that don't live here. They are proud to serve the citizens, they're always very nice to the citizens, and I have heard some of the citizens come in and they get pretty cranky, but I never hear the staff complain about that, they're always smiling and doing their job with a lot of pride, and I want to thank all of them for that, because that's what makes his job really easy. And I'm proud to be the mayor of this city, y'all should know that, y'all make me proud. That's really all I got for my report. Mike told me to keep it short, that's about as short as I could keep it. People that really know me go, man, can you shut up, please? You never stop talking. So, I'm going to pass it off at this point. We're going to move over to David Donaldson.
Mayor, council. Unfortunately, I have a little bit more to report than what I normally do.
(Laughter) That's a good thing, right?
I guess. So, we've been doing a lot of community policing. Officer Ramirez just went to Career Day at one of the, one of the schools and participated in that, that was, that was very good. Sergeant Flores, Shimansky, Officer Graham, Mike and I attended alert training. It's for active shooter for schools and stuff like that. Good training, it's mandatory by the state. You've got until September of 2027 to get this training done, but we wanted to get out in front of it, because if something happens like that, we need to be ready to go, those are priorities, so we were out two days doing that. Let's see here, Officer Ramirez, Rawls, Sergeant Flores, and I participated in a nonprofit organization for the Hope Foundation, which supports the veterans and individuals with I'm honored to say that we attended the 50's Club banquet where Officer Ramirez, Tasha Ramirez, received Officer of the Year for the job that she's done, it's been outstanding, couldn't ask for anybody better. Julie and I are working on a grant for the camera, for the flock camera system. Each camera's $3,000 a year, we're working on a grant where we may be able to get six or seven on that grant. And then every year, we have to renew this grant. So, we don't have access to the flock camera systems, there's not a license you can buy, you actually have to buy the camera to participate in the flock program.
So, I know we talked about that, whether we, because there are some, now I'm seeing more and more pop up, there's one down by Protec, you know, we've always had the two right here, and then I've seen a couple of them in the Home Depot parking lot now. So, we, you checked into that, we can't get access to Ulysses City, huh?
No, sir, we have to have a license port, and it's a good investigative tool, because we get a lot of thefts, we can actually return some of these businesses their product, because we know the trail that they came, because these cameras take pictures of the car and the license plate, so we'll know the way they, to get the property back to them that they've taken, and plus, we've got a car right now that we're going to seize, it was used in a felony theft, so we're seizing a PT Cruiser. I'm sorry, it's a Chevy HR, yes. Thank you, Julie. Anyway, it's not in...
Keep him in line, will you?
It's not in real good shape, but we're going to take it, and what we can sell it for is what we're going to sell it for. We appreciate everything we can get, we're going to continue to do that. Moving on to, do you have any questions, Mayor, council?
Nope. Y'all have any questions for Dave?
Okay. Moving on to stats for last month, traffic contacts was 306, DWIs, we had eight for the month, narcotic offenses, there was zero accidents, one. Total arrests were 31, that includes warrant arrests as well. Disturbances, we had four, thefts, we have nine. Let's see here, undesirable, we had one, assist other agency, we had two, and residential checks, 168 for people that have been on vacation, business checks, 519. Thank you, Mayor, council.
Alright, thank you, David. Alright, we'll move on to City Administrator Mike Cram.
For the record, he never does what I ask him to do, so if he's saying he kept it short for me, I'm going to balk at that a little bit, but thank you for the accolades. We were very fortunate to receive positive endorsement from the voters for the bridge bond. We, as the mayor reflected, we will be meeting and discussing how to move forward with the county officials. After some brief discussion among ourselves, if we have any control over this situation to better serve our citizens and the school adjacent to us, if there's any way we can manage that construction project to begin right at the end of a school year, so that we can try to limit that school traffic conflagration that will go along with our daily commutes, that'll really be helpful to us, so I'll just letting you know I will work to get that done, and we can do that kind of thing with an RFP as part of the notice to proceed schedule and all of that, so hopefully we'll be able to work that out. It depends if county lets us run the program or not. If it's a county-run program, we'll probably have a little more difficulty, we'll see, but we'll try to work with them in that regard. Still working with CenterPoint to continue to remove trees that might be a hindrance and a threat to our power lines during storms. Thanks, Ed, for letting me know that those other two trees were removed. We had one that was actually arcing during a storm a few weeks ago, I think it was right across the street from your house, Randy, but both of those have been removed, they just happen to be on private property, so it took a little longer. Thanks to Roads and Drainage, for those who don't know what the Roads and Drainage Committee does, they're actually very active. They walk around, drive around, whatever, every time it rains, and look for problem spots that we can address, but they've also been walking their quadrants, looking for more of these trees that are hitting that top line. So, the line that CenterPoint addresses is that main feed, which is the top line, the bare one. At points, we have multiple lines that are at the very top, not the insulated wires, not the braided ones, those are made to have contact with the branches and stuff, but if you are walking, moving around the island, and you see trees that look like they're endangering that top line, that's the main feed of this island, please send me an email and a picture and a location, and I'll go out and look at it, because I've got a contact at CenterPoint with their forestry division, and they promised me they'll get on those as I send them groups of needed activities. Thanks again to Cheryl for putting together the debris removal services, RFP, we received four proposals, we finished looking at those today, we do have one that we will be recommending to council at the next meeting. Sent an email to Shellmark today in reference to something the mayor was referring to in his report regarding the boat ramp. I've been very happy with our engineering firm for the city, Colliers, they're very detail oriented, they don't miss much. They looked over the plans that were submitted with the grant, because we're having them help us prepare the RFP and from the technical side, and there's some stuff that we had to go back to Shellmark requesting that they clarify in those plans, so that's going to delay us a little bit, hopefully not too long, we'll stay on them pretty ardently to make sure they can come up with the answers we need. Just as a note, I'll be out of the office all week, the week of May 19th, for a mandatory training I have to attend. I'll be local, it'll be in Galveston, so I'll be available by phone or email or whatever, but I will be out of the office for that week. We'll have an agenda item for the next meeting for council to vote to hold one meeting instead of two during the months of June, July, and August. And then, since we are swearing in three incumbents for new terms, it seems appropriate to mention a few significant details from the past two years. As we recognize and appreciate the positive working relationship we have with our elected body, we as staff really want to let you guys know how much that's appreciated. I've been in city government for over 30 years, that is rare as hen's teeth, to have a really good functional, not dysfunctional, relationship between the whole staff as a collective and the elected body. We've gotten a lot accomplished that, for a small city, when I was looking at the list, Cheryl started compiling all these accomplishments and all these things we've been able to do just in the last two years while you guys have been the body. And Cheryl, if you don't mind, can you go over some of those things?
We increased, can you hear me? We increased the employees retirement contribution from 6% to 7%, a 20% salary increase for police officers to align our pay with other agencies, received GFOA's excellent budgeting award for fiscal '24 the first time in CLS history, we also received it in fiscal '25. Metal canopy with security cameras in the back parking lot, completed FEMA's community assistant visit project, replaced the old sliding glass doors at City Hall with energy-efficient doors, employee break room is a complete remodel, the city public restroom's complete remodel to make ADA accessible, new Public Works truck, new server dedicated to the camera system at the pool, pathway and lighting at Okies, new contracts for the city engineer and city attorney, replaced the entryway lighting on Clear Lake Road, designated as a music-friendly city by the Texas Music Office, managed the fiscal '24 budget, which resulted in a surplus of $270,000, completed the planning phase of the Shellbottom Boat Ramp Grant, submitted the grant for the construction phase, collaborated with Galveston County Commissioners to place the bridge, to place the bridge replacement on the 2025 ballot, which voters approved on May 3rd, 2025. Two new storage buildings at Public Works, replaced the roofs, the roof on the Public Works building, replaced the damaged subfloor at the east end of City Hall, paved the east parking lot at Town Center, contributed $50,000 to the rainy day fund, requested for proposals, completed request for proposals for city debris monitoring removal services and lawn and IT services, hurricane barrel recovery and FEMA reimbursement for expenses, replaced generator deck at Clubhouse, purchased cracked ceiling equipment and trained the Public Works team to use it effectively, completion of a scanning project for all historic sets of oversized building plans. That's, that's, you know, that's not an all exhaustive list, but of course, you can see we did a lot. But we could not have achieved this without the support of the mayor and city council, and on behalf of all the city employees, we extend our gratitude, and here's to another productive two years.
See, I told you, I told you they were good. Thank you, Cheryl.
That was all I had.
So, you had? Mine was shorter than yours, I don't care what you say. Okay, moving on, we move on to public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council, if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now, or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual, and there'd be no yielding of time. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council at this time? Y'all don't knock each other over trying to get to that microphone. Okay, I'm going to say something now that I look back there. There are some refreshments back there, so when we're done, I did not make this announcement last time we did this, so make sure you stay around for the cookies, Mike, and the cupcakes and the sodas. Okay, having done, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, items A and item B, check register, city council meeting minutes, 4:15, 25. Is there any motions on the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda A and B.
Okay.
Have a motion by Ed, got a second by Amanda, is there any discussion on any of those items? Okay, motion passes, all, let's vote.
(Laughter)
All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Okay, new business, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items, presentation of silver dollars to your council members and mayor. Alright, we're going to start off with our mayor pro tem, Amanda Fenwick.
Thank you for your service, we're not shaking you, we appreciate you very much.
Councilman Rick Fisher.
I love you too, but I ain't helping you.
Ed Waters.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you.
Last but not least, Councilman Jeff Tarrell. Thank you for your service. Alright, that'll work.
So, before I present the mayor with his certificate and his silver dollar, I'm going to make a little speech, because the mayor has some nice things to say about us, but I think we feel the same way about the mayor. This man leads with heart, he has a passion for this community, for this city, for you, the people. There's probably not a day that goes by that I don't get a phone call from him, hey, this is what's going on, hey, what do you think about this, hey, let's do this, hey, how can we make this better? And so, y'all just need to know that, and Diana, I know he has a full-time job, but he has to work, but he lives, breathes, eats, and sleeps Clear Lake Shore, and so thank you, mayor, for your service.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate the kind words, but it takes a team, I'm going to keep saying that, because it does take a team. Thank you all for signing back up again, I am proud to serve with you. We will move on to the next item, item 8B, Statement of Office and Oath of Office for Election 2025, Reappointment of Mayor, Councilmember Jeff Tarrell and Councilmember Ed Waters.
I state your name. You solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office of mayor. For the city of Clear Lake Shore. Of the state of Texas. With all the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability? With the best of my ability? Preserve, protect, and defend? Preserve, protect, and defend? Constitution and laws of the United States of America? Constitution and laws of the United States of America? Of the state of the United States of America? So let me ask that again.
All right. We're al- we're almost to the cookies and stuff. Not quite. We're almost there. Okay, we will move on now, uh, the next item, uh, item 8C. We need to appoint a mayor pro tem. If I have my preference, you know where I'm going with that, but I don't get to make a motion here. So I think Amanda's done an outstanding job. Uh, she's always there to, well, I won't say she's always there to answer the phone because she's usually with Peyton at practice, but she does call me back right away. And, and we do talk about a lot of things. I, I think being the mayor pro tem at a time when there was limited information, I think it's very important that, that the council knows what's going on around them so they're better prepared for the things that we do together. So thank you for an outstanding job. Do we have any motions on item 8C?
I'll make a motion. We approve Amanda Fenwick as mayor pro tem.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Rick. Is there any discussion?
You're good for doing it again, right? Good deal.
Don't give her a choice. Just nominate her. No discussion? Okay, all in favor? I'm voting on that one too. I'm kidding. All right, we're gonna move on to item 8D. Resolution 2025-07, a resolution of the city of Clear Lake Shores supporting a no-wake zone in and around Clear Lake on June 20th, 2025, uh, during the Texas Outlaw Challenge. This is something that all the cities around the lake do, so when those boats are out there, they, there are no wake to disturb them.
I'll move to approve resolution 2025-07.
Got a motion by Amanda?
I'll second that.
A second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Item E, approve the purchase of three solar power radar signs from Radar Sign LLC for the amount of $12,656. I'm gonna turn that one over to the city administrator, Mike Cram.
Thank you, mayor. I've gotta thank the chief for doing the actual legwork on this. I originally got three quotes for it and then they started hounding me for whether we were gonna buy for them or not. So I gave them all the chief's identification information and forwarded them all to them. And he dealt with them all. And, uh, I'm glad I did because he ended up, uh, getting a discount if, for, for us purchasing three of them. One of the things, we're replacing the two old ones that we have on Clear Lake Road that we've already put about a thousand dollars into in my short time here and they still don't work. They're, they're basically just outmoded, um, end of useful life. So when I was meeting in one of my meetings with, uh, Roads and Drainage, one of the suggestions from a member of that committee was to put another one up on South Shore because we have kind of a blind curve and some intersecting streets out there and that tends to be one where people are concerned with speed. So I talked to the chief about it and he thought that was a good idea too, but he wanted to make sure that we got something with some technology built into it to where we could get speed counts and vehicle counts and he could better use that, that data to place his officers because the way those things work is they take vehicle, speed counts, but they also get the eighty-fifth and average speed of each vehicle during specific time breaks. So he can look at it and say, okay, we've got a really bad problem at this sign at 6:30 PM with northbound traffic. And so he'll know where to actually address those issues with his officers. But he did some legwork, got us some discounts, got us extended warranties with one of the companies and that's what you see here is the $12,656 for, uh, actually three of those, um, speed signs. So my request to council is, is to approve that request so that we can update our speed signs and have something that actually works.
Do we have any motions on item E?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the purchase of three solar, uh, power radar signs from Radar Sign LLC for $12,656.
Okay, motion by Ed?
I'll second.
Got a second by Amanda. Any discussion on this item?
Where are we gonna, where are we gonna put those? In the same place they are on Clear Lake Road and the one on South Shore?
Part of that's gonna be up to the police chief, so I'll let him have that one.
Roughly in the same spots. Okay.
I was just curious, so it, uh, it'll keep tabs on, uh, like you said, traffic and numbers and average speed. Where's that all, uh, where's that data all uploaded to?
It works off of an app and they have built-in Bluetooth. So basically as long as you get within like 50 feet of them and you have the app, which the police officers will have, they'll be able to download the information.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. We'll move on to, uh, item G. A resolution 2025-08, a resolution of the city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas City Council. Yep, I'm sorry. I saw Mike Cram there. Approved contracting high tide for surveying services related to the Narcissus Road paving project. Mike Cram.
So Narcissus is one of those places that we haven't yet had High Tide do a survey. And the survey that we need is a little more, uh, in-depth than what we've been doing around the island for the flow lines, et cetera. To rebuild a road, you need the roadway center, you need the roadway edges, you need all of the, uh, pieces of infrastructure surveyed as well. That's gonna be right at $11,000 to go with that repaving project for the full length of Narcissus Road.
Okay. Are we approving that amount right now? Or are we just approving you to?
Yes, sir. I just forgot to put the amount on the agenda item. I'm sorry. It's just over $11,000.
All right.
I wish it was 11.5.
I'm sorry?
How much, how much was it?
It's, let me check an email. $11,600 even.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, contracting high tide for surveying, uh, services related, uh, to the work on Narcissus Road paving project for $11,600.
I'll second. All right, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Jeff. Uh, any discussion on that subject? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Now we'll move on to item G. Resolution 2025-08, a resolution of the city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas City Council expressing support for House Bill 4538 during the 89th Texas legislation session. Supporting funding to assist with the removal of derelict vessels from the Texas Waterways referencing section 40.108 of the Texas Natural Resource Code. So, uh, Robert's here tonight. While back, these guys developed the Derelict Boat Club and they have been raising money to do that job. From what, what I know, and I don't know nearly what you guys know now, but in the very beginning, the GLO was head of that, but they had no funding. So at this point, in a nutshell, Dennis Paul is proposing, uh, in this legislative session that they take some of the registration money that they use to register boats and put in that kitty to do away with these derelict boats. And, um, I am all for that. These guys have been working really hard and, and raising money and getting boats out of the lake, but for every one they take out, two more show up. Is that not right? Yeah. And so, you know, I will say that David, our chief, had did an, an outstanding job when they were leaving them all around Clear Lake Shores and at least now they're somewhere else, but they're still out there. And, um, the Coast Guard and some of these people do not believe they're navigational hazards. I don't know how that can be, but, uh, I would never travel this lake at night, uh, ever in a boat. It's just not safe. Uh, and these guys are trying to make it safe and I wanna applaud Dennis Paul for, for bringing something forward to help with that. That's a major, major thing. So we're really kind of following on the skirt tails of Seabrook. Uh, this was sent to me by, uh, Tom over there, their mayor, and said, hey, would you get behind this? So I'm gonna ask us to get behind this. I think it's very important.
Mayor, I'll move to approve resolution 2025-08.
Okay, got a motion by Amanda?
I'll second it.
Second by Ed. Any discussion on that resolution? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Uh, item H, approve Clear Lake Shores PD Black 2015 Chevy Tahoe to be placed, um, for auction. Mike Cram.
So this Tahoe has over, over 90,000 miles on it, David?
Yes.
So it's, it's reaching end of useful life as a patrol vehicle anyway, but it's starting to have some engine problems. We've put about $3,000 into it in the last few weeks just to keep it running right. And, uh, if we wanna keep it longer, we're probably gonna have to replace an engine, which is several thousand dollars. Uh, so we're asking for the authority just when we have the next auction of all of our surplus equipment to put this on it as well.
Okay. We have any motions on item H?
I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, the Black 2015 Tahoe to be placed for auction.
Okay, got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Amanda. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Down to item I. Approve Clear Lake Shores Clubhouse, revise rental rates. I'm gonna turn this over to Mike because Mike did a lot of research on this and I think he would be a better speaker on this item, honestly. So Mike, will you take it from there?
Yes, sir. Thanks. So I tend to get ribbed a lot by the staff because I'm a little anal when it comes to verbiage and punctuation, but in my defense, I've been married to an English teacher for almost 30 years. But as I was reading through this, I noticed a couple of things that might have been, um, unintentionally omitted. Uh, when you get to page three at the bottom, it refers to the civic club. And it lists, um, it lists or it outlines the specific constraints for civic club activities. But one of the things I noticed missing from there that I wanted to bring to council's attention is the presence of police if they have over 100 people or they're serving or consuming alcohol. We, I realize the civic club is a, is a different entity than, you know, somebody from outside the city renting the facility, but the need to secure our building still remains, I think, if you bring a certain number of people in or if you're bringing, introducing alcohol into the festivities that might be going on here. So I would ask that council at least give some consideration to possibly amending it and including the same constraint or requirement for police for civic club activities. And then I also noticed that we don't, um, we have, uh, an existing kind of relationship with another entity, uh, the yacht club. And the yacht club is, is similar in my understanding, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. The yacht club is similar to the civic club in that it is citizens, but the civic club, while it raises, it, it has dues for people who are members, all of those dues go island-wide to people who are members or not members. Everybody is invited to all the civic club events is my understanding, whether you're a member or not. I don't think that's the same, uh, situation with the yacht club. And so they're, they're similar, but they're different. We don't address in here, uh, any kind of specific situation where we would consider different circumstances for the yacht club. We currently have a little bit of a different circumstance for them in that, um, they have a deposit that stays here constantly, but I don't know that they pay for rental fees every time that they rent the facility. I didn't know if council wanted to include anything like the civic club for the yacht club benefit here or we just wanted to, um, treat them as we would treat anybody else with the same standards as anybody else who would rent the facility.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on that. You, you may not know, Mike. So, um, I was approached by one of the yacht club members that, um, compared themselves to the civic club. And so although I was a yacht club member for quite a while, I, I do believe that they are different in, in not only one way, but many ways. You know, if you look at some of the things that are back here in the civic club, if, if you look at the chairs you're sitting on, the civic club bought those for this clubhouse. And so the civic club not only does events for the people, Mike, but they have things for the graduates, they have a program for them to, um, the scholarships that they give out. There, there are other things. I'm not knocking the yacht club. I'm just stating the fact that they give much more to the city than the yacht club. There was a council meeting, uh, Marlena brought to my attention and I, and I read the meeting minutes. There was a time when, um, the staff was directed by council to enter into an agreement with them. That never happened. She asked me to come up with an agreement. I find it hard for me to come up with an agreement for an entity when I don't know what they want from us. So I put that back on them to bring us a contract. That was last year. To this day, they've been renting it for free with their deposit, as they have been for a few years, and there is still no negotiation for a contract. So I don't know if, if we honor those council minutes from way back when. I, I don't really know how you guys wanna do that, but this probably is something we need to clear up now because otherwise it just keeps going like it is and it really, we should have some sort of an agreement with that entity. I don't know what that agreement is, but we should have something. So it really falls on, on you, you guys, uh, to come up with what you want us to do with that. So that's the only background I have on it. We couldn't find any contract. There is no contract. They do have insurance that's in the computer, I think, Secretary. Didn't we see a, a, a policy for their insurance in there under yacht club? But no contract. Yeah, and we don't even know if that's current. We need to look at that again.
The civic club is a 501(c)(3), correct? Is the yacht club? Does whatever we decide to do with the yacht club have to be in this agreement? Looking at you, Dick. Because we list, we list the civic club in here, so does it, does the, whatever we decide to do with yacht club have to be in here or can that be a separate agreement that we tackle after we approve this?
Well, I guess it depends on whether the yacht club's use of the clubhouse is considered a rental.
Gotcha.
Because it, I mean, the way this was written below, and I didn't address that because we didn't address it when we were talking about changing the rules. But if you, if you wanna change the rules, because it says that the civic club is, is not really required other than to give advance notice.
Right.
Because they're not, they're not actually renting that, so. Or at least they're excluded from payment for rentals. So I, I don't know if you wanna do the same for the yacht club or not. Is, or historically have we been collecting if they rent it or do they just not rent it?
They have a deposit. They have a deposit, but there's no rental fee.
Well, I mean, you can address them both. I mean, if you wanna waive them for both, then waive the fees for both. But, you know, they, they'd have to sign up for it and, you know, obviously reserve it.
Right.
And so ahead of time.
I think they do that now.
Yeah.
So it was over a year ago that we put on, we put the onus on them to come back with a, a contract for us and they have not done so yet, right?
Yeah, it's been a little while.
Here's a way to let the fire under them. So until they come back with the contract, they pay for the clubhouse. And then once they come back to what we asked them for over a year ago, then we can go and amend it after that. Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
That's really up to you guys. However you wanna do that. I think Mike was bringing it forward just because we're addressing the clubhouse and how it's used and the rentals.
Right.
And it's probably a good time to clarify that. That would be my guess.
Well, Dick, is it easier for us to put it in here or just come back with a contract? Because it's, it, it's an alteration of the fees, so it has to be approved by the body. But if it's a contractual obligation, then we just don't have to put it in here so we don't have to come back with an amendment to the ordinance necessarily or to this, these clubhouse rules if we just have a singular contract. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I mean, you can certainly have it separate or you can incorporate it in here, either, either way you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Well, let, let me, I'm gonna shed a little light. Well, let, let me, I'm gonna shed a little light on that. It's a lot easier to keep up with if it's part of the clubhouse rentals.
Yeah.
Than a separate contract floating around somewhere else. I'm, I'm just gonna say that from the staff's point of view. When you look at this, it's gonna be a lot easier for them to go, here's the reference point.
Yeah, but something tells me that what they want is gonna be not an A, B, and C like what we have for the civic club. And so can you just say per the contract?
You can.
In this rental agreement, have a separate contract and then have the contract?
Well, so, uh, I mean, you, you're gonna have to educate me. So does the, does the yacht club put up a deposit?
They ha- they have a deposit.
They have a standing deposit, right? It's a standing deposit. But they don't pay rental, but they do go through the process to reserve the space, right, Kristy?
Their request is they want it the second Wednesday of every month.
Um.
Robert? You wanna speak?
Well, one of, one of the things we are doing is, is, is upping the, the, uh, security deposit. So while they have a standing deposit, I think it's, you know, short of what we're going to require in the future, so they'd have to obviously supplement that.
Well, once any changes are made, we're gonna have to have a conversation with them anyway.
I, I think it's probably easier to just figure out what the terms are that you want with the yacht club and the clubhouse. Let's put it in this, and have one agreement. And that, I think it's much simpler.
Robert, go ahead.
Robert, state your name and address. And I'll get to it.
Robert Patterson, uh, sixty-eight Harbor Lane over in Lazy Bend. Uh, many of you know me, know me from the Dead Boat Society, the abandoned boat bit, but I am also the newly-elected common-worthy Clear Lake Shore yacht club. So a lot of these things have fallen into my lap. Uh, that is one of the pending items that I was told about this past week. So, um, I think at least as I understand it, it is a, uh, our insurance is current. We are a five oh one three C, and that, uh, that we're gonna be changes. I was unaware that was on the agenda tonight. Uh, that detail of having the yacht club into that, which is fees, I understood. Um, but that, that process has been discussed. I'm not sure where we are on that, that, uh, submission of what the contract is supposed to say. I didn't know that that conversation happened, Marlena, in that way, but we can address it this week. We will address it this week.
So, Robert, if we postpone this item to the next council meeting, is that enough time, do you think, for you?
Absolutely. One hundred percent.
Okay.
I think, I think what Randy has said is true. There's a little bit of ambiguity in what was done before. I do agree that some of the things the yacht club does are all-inclusive of the community, and some of them are not. Uh, we have rented the clubhouse, and the same thing with police officer and things like that in the past. Uh, but I think we can come through, work through what the yacht club would want very quickly and very easily, uh, within the next couple of weeks. Absolutely.
Council, are you in favor of that? If we postpone it, let the yacht club work with Mike and come back with something, we incorporate their terms in here?
Absolutely.
Then I make that motion, however you wanna word that, Kristy.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
So, Dick, I'll, as soon as I meet with him and, and we get something on paper, I'll forward it to you for consideration?
Yeah. That'd be great.
And, uh, I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone.
To the next council meeting.
This whole clubhouse rental agreement, right? To the next club, to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Rick. Is there any more discussion on that? Okay.
Was there, was there anything else in the clubhouse rental agreement that?
We needed to.
Need to be addressed? I mean, uh, there were changes that were in there, so were there any of the changes that were made that were?
So I think what Mike said about the police with a, a civic club event, I mean, if we require that for everybody else, I think that's not unreasonable to ask, right? Of, of our civic club?
I mean, do they commonly have more than fifty people at a civic club event here in the clubhouse?
Yes. But not at the clubhouse. You're right. Not at the clubhouse. Not at one time.
No, it depends. There's a couple. Yeah.
But that's not more than a hundred.
No, it's less than a hundred.
Right. Because steak and Sinatra is limited to fifty. Thanksgiving, people rotate in and out.
Yeah. They're, they're all over.
Yeah. The other consideration is whether.
I think so too.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the thing with steak and Sinatra. It's not, we don't serve it, but, uh, you know, people do bring, you know, a bottle of wine to have, but it's, you know, you can't have steak without red wine. Probably gonna get some backlash to that, but, probably white wine lovers.
If you wanna get the gout faster, yes, you have to include the red wine.
So, yeah. So since steak and Sinatra is Saturday, I have no problem postponing it until the next meeting to put that in there. [laughter]
Well, to be clear and to be fair to the attorney, the way this is written, as I recall from reading it, is whether alcohol is served or consumed. And so we, we probably need to clarify that. So if, if, if there's gonna be no requirement for police officers if they're over a hundred or serving or consuming alcohol, then that, that's fine. If there is a requirement and we only want it for alcohol, or if there's over, however you guys wanna do it, we just need to make sure it's clear for.
Actually, we'll be serving. [inaudible]
If they're on duty, probably not alcohol.
No, but most of them, we feed them. Yeah.
No, absolutely. All police officers are definitely invited, and, uh, anybody that shows up on or off duty, we will feed them.
So as of right now, they're not required to provide an officer as this is written, correct?
Correct.
So.
Correct.
It's not gonna affect your event. It's, it's not gonna affect your event because we're, we're gonna go by what's here right until we change it. So.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's why I have no problem postponing it until, uh, the next council meeting.
And then we, David, you could come work that.
Yes.
I'm kidding. Okay. So do we have any more discussion about changing anything with the clubhouse agreement? And we're gonna postpone the other? Everybody in agreement with that? Okay. All in favor of that motion? Okay. Motion passes unanimous. It's not on here, but there was a supplemental item, uh, that we're gonna cancel because they withdrawn their ask from us. So, uh, that item I put on at the last minute trying to accommodate, uh, something with, uh, the Keema Police Department. Uh, it was consider, uh, item eight J, consideration of possible action of Keema Clear Lake Shores Police Department to hold a function, uh, at Stewart Elementary and use our swimming pool on May twenty-eighth. They called this morning and said, look, we're not gonna do a swimming pool thing anymore, so we don't need that. So with that said, we will adjourn the meeting at seven thirty, or seven twenty-eight.